And I sit down, I look at my, I have two big screens. And then realize I don't have a camera on these screens. Like I've never done a zoom call for work. Until COVID-19. And that's always been at home on my laptop. So today I'm doing the, the phone. But Bill will be calling in and he has all the presentations. So we're, we'll be good on that. And so hopefully you guys can see actually me, not the pictures of the lovely trees in the snow.
I like the.
So you guys doing okay hanging in there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's strange actually being physically in the office today. It's since March 11th. I, this may be my fifth time that I've been in the office.
Yeah, my wife just went for the first time last week too. And she said it was bizarre.
It is like.
Yeah.
Yeah, like when I started working from home full time as we're just trying to figure out all the setup and now being back in the office. I'm like, okay. So, but all good. Hopefully we'll eventually, the world will be all right again.
So Heather, are you with the Argo then? Oh, gotcha. Okay.
I, I'm with White Bear, Ankle, Tanaka and Waldron. So our firm, we represent special districts and then developers. So we're doing the service plan with them, but I'm not employed by Mighty Argo.
Gotcha.
They're one of our clients. Yep.
Okay.
And then you guys have another meeting right after this, correct?
Yep. No, not tonight.
Not tonight. Okay.
Jimmy, we, we, we got a short one at seven.
We do.
Am I wrong on that?
No, you're right. Huh? I'm sorry. Um, yes, we do, man.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna be really short.
Yeah, because we have on our calendars for next week being the actual, the, the meeting, meeting. This just being the workshop, but excuse me, I saw that you had something or I thought you had something at seven. So I just wanted to make sure we were cognizant of your timeframe.
Heather?
Yes.
Are we going to be able to ask, ask you a few questions as we go through this?
Sure. What's going to happen? Um, we're always happy to answer questions. Bill Ankle, he is the shareholder who's on this project. So he'll be joining our call any minute. He will go through a PowerPoint and at any time you have any questions, feel free to stop him or we can wait until the end. It's really however you would like to proceed, but we're always happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Welcome counsel. Let's see, do we have Scott Pennell will not be with us tonight, uh, nor will Bob Bowlen. Is it okay for Bob Bowlen to be on the work session? It is. Well, no, Jan's gonna let me call him. Hey Siri, call Bon Bowlen.
This is Bill Ankle here, just checking Heather, can you hear me okay?
I can now.
All right.
Yep, we're good. How you doing?
Just fine and dandy. And Jonathan, would I, will I be able to share my screen to go through the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Hey Mayor.
He's on the phone right now.
If Bob had planned not to, to participate in this, that's okay. Certainly we didn't, uh, we don't need him for a quorum on this is a workshop and that's okay if you can't find him.
Okay. I can't find him.
Check the local, check the local pub.
He'll probably call me in a minute. All right. Well, welcome everybody. This is our work session for August 17th. I see some new faces on here. William, Heather. Mayor Mike Kilman, nice to meet you. So let's jump right into this thing. Uh, we're here to talk about the, um, service plan for the Mighty Argo Metro District. And what I'm going to do is I, we all got a PowerPoint within our packet. I'm just going to hand it over to the Argo team and let them take us through this.
That sounds good to me. This is Bill Ankle. I'm with White Bear, uh, Ankle, Tanaka and Waldron. I have Heather Hartong, who you've already talked to today, uh, on the line. And Brian McFarland, who I think you guys know already is here. And, uh, Lacey Knowles just joined us at, at least at the bottom of my screen. I don't know where she is on yours. But Lacey is with DA Davidson and DA Davidson is an underwriter firm that has, uh, helped us with the financing plan for the metro district service plan that we have submitted. So, um, she is here as well. And, um, just a couple of remarks, and then I'm going to run through the PowerPoint that you had in your packet. We have, uh, as you know, uh, the development for the Mark Mighty Argo mine has been ongoing for a couple of years now, probably. And there's been a variety of, of development approvals that have occurred to date. There are more in the offing. What we are proposing in the form of the Mighty Argo Metropolitan District is a financial resource to support the project through the, uh, through access to tax exempt municipal bond financing. And, um, we have prepared a, uh, service plan, which is the document that will be presented to council next week for, uh, action. Should you be so inclined to approve the service plan, which describes the general purposes and powers of the district, uh, includes a financial plan, includes a variety of limitations on the activities of the metro district. And that will allow us to proceed to an organizing election, which would occur in November of this year. So that we can equip the project with this financial resource to assist it as it goes forward. One thing that I just always like to point out, um, ahead of time is that this is not a land use approval. You, there's a separate channel that you folks have for purposes of approving, uh, development plans for the project. What this entity does is it's a, it's a financial resource to support the project in whatever manner you end up approving it. So, um, just be aware of that distinction. When we get this, uh, district organized and approved, it'll stand ready to serve as a financial, uh, resource for the project. So what I'd like to do, uh, is share my screen and go to the PowerPoint. Oh, I should point out, we, we have, as you, as I think some of you know, we have gone through a, a similar, uh, presentation with the planning commission. Couple of weeks ago, and then we, um, went before planning commission. Subsequent to that and received a, a recommendation of, of, uh, for this to go forward, uh, for you folks to consider. And so they've seen this PowerPoint that you're about to see. What it's really designed to do is, is first to give you a little bit of background and foundation in metro districts in Colorado. You've only got one or maybe two districts, uh, that have been organized, uh, inside the city. One of them was last year, Soda Creek. As some of you may remember, um, we did model our service plan off of the one that was approved there. So we, we tried to line up with something that you've already seen. You also have a, a park and recreation district that's active within your boundaries. It's been around for some time. So, uh, with that, I am going to, and by the way, feel free to interrupt me at any point in time during the presentation. And, and I'll stop and answer whatever questions you may have. We also have some time set aside for questions and answers. Afterwards, recognizing that you have a regular council meeting, um, to go at 7:00 PM. So with that, I am going to share my screen. And ask first of all, if, uh, if you all can see that you may have laptops or otherwise, but I tried to make it as large as I could. So hopefully you are, um, you're all able to, uh, to see that. And just a little bit of background about the firm. Um, I have been involved in the metro district space for the better part of 40 years. When I first came to Colorado back in the early 1980s and have been representing, um, folks that are looking to organize metro districts, uh, ever since that time. I've also been involved in the representation of districts that have already, um, that already exist. Whether they be homeowner controlled districts or commercial districts. I've, I've been in both, uh, both areas. I've also provided advice to, um, um, public entities such as yourselves over the years, uh, in terms of, um, what their special district policies ought to look like and what their service plans ought to look like. So I'm able to see things from many different viewpoints. And hopefully I've had enough questions over the years that I'll be able to answer whatever questions you've come up with. So with that, um, let me introduce, uh, metro districts in, um, in Colorado. So what is a special district? So a special district is a governmental ent- entity, a quasi, they call it a quasi-public entity. It is a political subdivision of the state. And in that sense, it's similar in many respects, um, to a city or a county or a town. In that, uh, all of those entities are political subdivisions of the state of Colorado as well. Metro districts just happen to have a very focused, um, uh, set of powers that they can exercise. They are formed under, uh, Title 32 of the Colorado revised statutes. It's called the Special District Act. And they're primarily, uh, used as a tax exempt financing mechanism to help fund a portion of the costs, um, that a development would experience, whether they be, whether it be a residential development, a commercial development or a mixed use development. They're in wide use in Colorado. There, there are probably at last count, the division of local government had something like 2,000, um, uh, special districts in the state. Uh, a large portion of those being metro districts, uh, metro districts, um, have a, a whole suite of powers that we'll go through here in a, in a few minutes. There's some other types of districts that are just one purpose districts, like a water district or a sanitation district, or as you have a park and recreation district. And so they're in wide use in Colorado. You'll see them in development projects all over the state. And again, their primary benefit.
A benefit.
I'm sorry, I'm getting an echo. The galaxy. I don't know if Jonathan, you're able to meet that. Okay, maybe we're good. All right. So that's, uh, just, uh, the introductory component here. We're a governmental entity subject to a lot of the same rules and regulations that, uh, city councils are. What are the powers of a special district? What can we finance? Here's a list from, uh, the statute. A lot of the, uh, common types of public infrastructure that you would see, street improvements, which could also include drainage. Safety protection improvements. These would be directional signage, signalization, uh, stop signs, the things of that nature. Park and recreation improvements can include a wide range of amenities, whether it be pools or open space or, uh, recreational programs. You'll see the whole range under this power. Water system improvements, including the acquisition of water rights, sanitary sewer improvements. We also have a storm drainage function here for detention ponds and retention ponds and the like. Transportation improvements. So if we have, uh, bus stops and multimodal transportation, uh, centers, we have the ability, metro districts have the ability to provide funding for those types of improvements. And we get to some of the more lesser used powers, mosquito control, television relay and translation. Fire protection is a, is a big power, but it's typically exercised already by another governmental entity that, um, is already active. So unless you're in a, a rural area that really doesn't have any fire protection services, you're less likely to see that. Metro districts also have the ability to undertake covenant enforcement and design review and in cooperation with the local, um, police force to provide, uh, security services. How are special district improvements financed? I mentioned that they're primarily a financing mechanism for public infrastructure to support a given project. And the primary means of financing is through the issuance of tax exempt bonds, which are at lower cost, um, interest rates than you would see. Were the private developer to go to the construction lender and seek, um, financing for the same types of improvements. Those bonds are paid through a variety of sources, a variety of revenue sources, primarily adware and property taxes. And we'll talk more about that when we get into the service plan. There's also something called specific ownership taxes. These are a share of the vehicle registration fees that, um, occur within the county. Um, all, all governmental entities that have, uh, the power to tax, um, that exist within a given county have the opportunity to share in a portion of the vehicle registration fees, um, that are paid by, uh, people registering their vehicles. In addition, um, metro districts have the ability to impose fees and charges for services that are provided. It's important to note that, uh, the city has no obligation for any debt that the district might issue. It's completely siloed within the boundaries of the, of the district itself. So there is no responsibility, uh, for the city for any debt that may be issued, um, by the, uh, by the metro district. How do you form a district? Well, we're in that process right now. We have to, as I mentioned, uh, prepare a service plan, which describes the powers and purposes of the district as well as any limitations. Includes a financing plan and, and other items. I view it as kind of a, the city charter. Um, so we have to submit that service plan. And then that service plan is reviewed in, in our case by planning commission and then by the, uh, city council. Once we get approval of the service plan, then we have to go to the district court. And we have to petition the district court to organize the district through the calling of an election that'll be held on November the 3rd of this year. And, um, the district court is responsible for making sure that the process that is followed in organizing the metro district and conducting the election is done in accordance with state statute. So the city doesn't have any oversight responsibility with respect to the election. So we have the organizational election that is ordered. We go have our election on November the 3rd. The elect, the voters at the election are those who are qualified electors within the boundaries of the metro district. It's not a citywide election. So it's just, uh, the vote of those that are going to be burdened by the taxes that come along with the metro district. After the election, we go back to the district court. We show them the rest of the steps that, uh, that we followed in, in order to meet the statutory requirements. And then the court will issue an order and decree creating the district, uh, at which point the district formally comes into, um, existence. Once we're in existence, how do we operate? Well, we have a board of directors, five member board of directors, um, that will be, that will consist of eligible electors that have an interest in property within the boundaries of the district. And you have to be registered to vote in Colorado. So you have to be a Colorado resident. And you either have to own taxable property within the special district or have some other, a contract to purchase taxable property within the district. There's a variety of techniques that are used when you're in a development situation and you don't have a lot of electors around. There's, there's some processes that the, the legislature has authorized to enable you to have electors to vote in an election and to populate the board of directors. Um, and so the directors are elected at the same election, um, where we have the, um, uh, organization of the district, um, on the ballot as well as a variety of questions relating to taxing, uh, taxing power and debt that will be issued. As I mentioned, special districts are governments. We, there's a requirement that special district boards have regular meetings. There's no particular set time that they have to have them, but they do have to have regular meetings. Those meetings are noticed in the same fashion that you folks are required to give note, public notice of your meetings. And all of those meetings are open to the public and all of the activities that are undertaken in those meetings are public record, just as is the case with the city council. Most special districts, in order to achieve their functions, need to engage a variety of consultants. They typically don't have, uh, direct employees, um, because our mission is more specific to the financing and the construction of public infrastructure. And it's not very cost effective to have employees and staff. You typically don't need them to, um, to achieve the goals of the, of the metro district. As I mentioned, we are a public body. The board of directors is governed by a, a variety of statutes in the state that apply to public bodies. Um, but there's, and there's been a, a fair amount of attention addressed towards transparency involving metro districts. And, and the legislature's been taking wax at that for years. And I think they're just going to continue to take steps to try to increase the transparency and the availability of information concerning special districts, um, to the public at large. And most importantly, to any taxpayers that may be, um, within the metro district. That's, that's been a source of, of debate and consternation over the years and keep trying to improve that, um, with legislative, um, uh, proposals. So among them, we, the order and decree creating the district is recorded against the property, um, in the boundaries of the district. There are a number of, uh, filings that have to be made with the division of local government, identifying who the board of directors is, how you get on the board of directors. What's the total debt capacity of the metro district? What are the total taxes of the metropolitan district? A lot of, a lot of that information is required to be, um, placed with the division of local government or on websites or other, um, avenues where there's publicly available information. I mentioned our meetings are public meetings. There has to be notice posted to those public meetings. We have to maintain minutes of the meetings, just as you do. Other records of the districts such as contracts, uh, and, and other material, um, documents are a public record and can be requested by any member of the public, not just those that are owning property or paying taxes within the boundaries of the district. We're subject to the same budget law that, that the city council is. Um, we have to publish notice of the budget each year. There's a public hearing on the adoption of the budget. We also have to have annual financial audits to ensure that there's an independent review of the district's financial activities to ensure that, um, uh, all of that information is, uh, is in the public domain. Benefits, um, it provides, as I mentioned, access to tax exempt municipal bond financing that is payable only by the property taxpayers that are located within the boundaries of a given metropolitan district. City has no obligation. City residents have no obligation for property taxes or debt that are, that is issued by a governmental entity. So, I mean, the metro district. And as such, you know, the old adage growth pays its own way. This is one of the primary mechanisms in Colorado by which that occurs. The other element that comes into play, uh, that has some history to it is, yes, we have access to tax exempt municipal bonds. Yes, we have the ability to impose property taxes. What happens, you know, if the development doesn't occur? What happens if the property tax base doesn't show up? How do we protect property within the boundaries of the district from unreasonable levels of property taxes? If there isn't a significant amount of assessed value there? Well, that's been addressed over the years through something called a mill levy cap. And it's, it's been both a feature of service plans, uh, throughout the state, um, that, that have been adopted by other jurisdictions, other cities and counties, but also, uh, in the legislative, uh, realm as well. Special District Act refers to limits on the amount of debt that a metro district can issue. And it talks about caps on the amount of mills that can be imposed for debt service. And you'll see there's a cap that you folks have already approved, um, in the Soda Creek, uh, program to, uh, help ensure that, uh, property taxes never go beyond a certain, uh, maximum threshold. So that's a feature you'll see shortly. So a little bit of history, uh, gone over this already. We did our planning commission workshop on the 29th. We had our planning commission meeting on the 5th. We are here tonight for this work session. We're scheduled for the 24th for formal action on the service plan with our election to occur in November of 2020. In our service plan, which I'll get into a, a little bit more detail in a minute here, we have a triple district structure. And, and so we have a district one, we have a district two, we have a district three. The reason for that, uh, we have found over the years where you have a project that, that, um, has some length to the development horizon. Uh, and a mix of commercial and non, and residential uses within the boundaries or potential residential uses. And it's helpful to have, uh, an administrative district, which is usually our district number one. That's the face of the metro district. That's the entity that interacts with the city. That's the entity that, um, basically, uh, responds to any questions that there may be about the metro district activities. It's the administrative arm for the, for the districts as a whole. The other two districts, one would be a, a commercial district and one would be a residential district. We have also found over the years that it's better to separate commercial property from residential property, uh, in terms of district boundaries. One of the primary drivers behind that is that commercial property, um, is assessed at a 29% of market value for purposes of determining what its taxable value is versus residential property, which is in the 7% range today, may go lower than that. So the same mills imposed on the same commercial or on property that is commercial versus residential has a much greater in, impact on commercial property because of that difference in the assessed valuation, um, calculations. So we have found that it helps to separate the commercial from the residential so that you've got a little better ability to manage the property tax load on the commercial versus residential to ensure that you don't have market impacts that are negative. And you can have that situation happen if they're just mixed into the same district. I'm going to go into more of the powers and purposes of this district, um, but, uh, so I won't cover the last two bullets here. I'm going to stop for a second. That's your background. That's your quick and dirty background on metro districts 101 in Colorado. And the balance of the PowerPoint, which isn't all that much longer, just runs through the specifics of the service plan, um, for the Mighty Argo project. I'd be happy to take any questions now, or I can wait until, um, we get to the end. Uh, at your pleasure.
I have a cup. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Art. Go ahead.
I just a couple of questions probably seem very, um, minor to you as far as the quality of the question, but who, um, usually purchases these bonds? Are they purchased by investment groups, individuals? I mean, is there a, how's that function as far as the bonds being purchased?
For this type of, uh, issuance, it would be institutional investors. So those that are sophisticated and understand what it is that they're buying and what the mill levy caps are and that sort of thing. So it would not be marketed to, uh, individuals.
Okay. And who rates the bonds as far as, a lot of bonds are rated AAA, anywhere down to junk bonds. How do they get their rating in this particular situation?
Usually metro district bonds, uh, for a developing district, a brand new development like this. They don't usually carry a rating because there's not enough critical mass there to persuade the rating agencies to, to give them a rating. So initially the bonds that would be issued would be non-rated bonds. And, uh, but as the project develops, um, and matures, and as there's more assessed value, uh, then there's an opportunity to go to the rating agencies and receive a rating. We, we see that just as in the logical course of development, but it takes, takes, uh, some time. You can't, you can't issue rated bonds right out of the box.
So buyer beware kind of at the beginning, I guess, huh?
Institutional investors that are going to be marketing.
Right. Uh, one other question, and this, this is a what-if question. Um, it came up at the beginning of this conversation, uh, a few weeks ago. There was a possibility, and now we applied for a grant. I don't know if we received the grant or not, for them to lend the city some money to develop the trails, uh, up above them. And if the grant comes through, and it may have, I'm not aware of it, uh, then it's a non, uh, non-conversational piece. But if the grants don't come through and we lend money from, or borrow money from Argo as they have offered to us, I think it's about $400,000. uh, offered to us, I think it's about four hundred thousand dollars. And for some reason, um, Argo goes bankrupt. You've said earlier that we're not out of the hook for anything. Would that change that particular situation? Would we, you know, that, that a creditor go after under those circumstances?
I'll, you know, I'll pass that off to Brian in a second here. Uh, I would, uh, just point out that that relationship between what I understand about it, which isn't very much, between Argo, the development group and, and the city. That's, that's a separate matter from any, any bond issue that the metro district might engage in. And so Brian, would you like to, uh, add a little color to that and answer that question?
Yeah, thanks, Bill, and thank you, Art, for the question. I think that first, I just want to be, just clarify the, the, um, the four hundred thousand dollars is not a loan to the city. Um, what it is, is we're, you, the city has agreed in our public improvement agreement to defer receipt of the ticket share allocation for gondola ticket sales. So we're not loaning money. We're capitalizing the, the trail, um, construction for the initial phases anyway, of four hundred thousand dollars. And the city's just agreed to not, you know, take that fifty cents per ticket allocation. Um, so there's no loan, right? It's just we're capitalizing within our, our construction loan facility. And the city's going to manage the work, of course, with Humba. Uh, but we're just providing a kind of a, a wave, a way forward to get construction moving on the trails, given that last year's grant was not successful. Uh, so this, this, want to make that, that, that point.
So that fifty cents isn't considered a form of repayment?
Yeah, as that's how we are made whole because in, you know, we, we're, we're, we're keeping that money until we get the the, the recovery of that four hundred thousand dollars. So, and we expect that to happen within two years. But we're not, right, right? And, 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 you know, we have to have a separate meeting with the city to talk about all the mechanics and how that actually works and how the gap goes through the city, but that's, that's separate from this discussion.
Okay, I, I, my, my question's simply because I, I don't want us to be this residents of the city to be, you know, bombed by uh, that type of thing. If, if, and I, I don't anticipate, it seems like a very well managed company and I don't anticipate bankruptcy, but you never know. And, uh, that's why I, I asked the question, but thank you.
No, and maybe, Bill, you can just expand a little bit on the, on who actually has the risk, um, right? Uh, uh, on the transaction, who carries that risk? It's not the city, of course.
No, it's, it's the bondholders that metro district issues bonds. It's the bondholders because they've got a they've got a, they're buying a bond that has a mill levy cap on it. And they understand because they're sophisticated, um, that whatever that mill levy produces is what they're going to get. And, and so they do ta, they take the risk at the end of the day.
So they can't come after us, uh, under any circumstances?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll sleep better tonight. Thank you.
That's good, Art.
All right. Do I have any questions from anybody else at this point?
I do.
Okay, Jim?
Bill, you, uh, the financial resource to support the project, yeah, of, of course, who, who pays that back? The people that are gonna build a restaurant or sublease it or whatever. Um, at what extent does it, does, does that ever end for the, for the people repaying this? Or is it a, what, a non-stop funnel of money back to the investors? For the special district and the extra tax, what percent is that? And wh- where is the cap at? What mill levy is that going to be?
Sure, the mill levy cap is fifty, fifty mills for debt service. That's pretty standard, um, statewide. Uh, if you sample any dozen different jurisdictions, um, around the state, you would see service plans that have a fifty mil cap in there for debt service. Um, the property that is within the taxing boundaries of the metro districts will be the properties that are obligated to pay those, uh, the fifty mills are, are up to the fifty mills. So.
So, so let's, let's put it into real numbers. As far as like, if it was up and running today, what would the property taxes cost that individual versus next year or the year before if the market continues the way it is right now?
I might need, uh, help from our, uh, investment advisor to answer that question. Um, Lacy, uh, are you? Um, there you are. So Lacy Knowles has, uh, produced the financing plan that is attached to the service plan. And that financing plan, um, takes a variety of development assumptions. Like how much, how much square feet of, of retail space will there be? How much square feet of hotel, uh, uh, will there be? Um, how much other real property will be owned by the Argo, uh, project developers? Um, all of those, all of the people that own that taxable property will be obligated to pay property taxes to, 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 to pay for this, um, these bonds. I don't know if we're able to, like, maybe you can, Lacy. I don't know, based on some of the development assumptions that you have. We can, we can identify in this, and the, and the financing plan identifies the dollar volume of property taxes that we produce using the entire development and the development assumptions. But I don't know, Lacy, if it's possible for you to, like, by way of example, if you took a I don't know, a representative retail space, um, with a certain value to it and then applied our fifty mills to it, what would that, what would that retail space pay in the way of property taxes? It's kind of a hard question to answer, sir.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would just like to know in reality, the, because I know plenty of homeowners.
Lacy?
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? I apologize. I haven't, um, you can't hear me? No one can hear me? Okay, great. Fantastic. I keep getting this, uh, internet is unstable connection. I'm not sure what's going on here. So I apologize, but I'm glad everyone can hear me. Yeah, so I actually have, uh, you know, a, a calculator that where I can plug in a, a market valuation for any given property and then run a certain mill levy against it and give you a sense of what the property taxes annually will be. So I'm just trying to pull that up here and I can give you some specific examples. But essentially, for any one given property owner, your tax exposure is limited to the assessed property. And it's the mill levy burden that is imposed, seventy mills. So if you give me just a couple of moments, if you guys want to, I, I can jump back in and give you some specific dollar amounts, but let me just let me pull a couple of documents.
Yeah, Lacy, you've got a, you've got a really rough internet connection, just so you know. I'm not sure how well we're going to be able to hear you.
Some good numbers instead of just spitballing for you. I'll give you some actual information back in a moment.
And she's not here.
And a couple of questions in my connection.
Um, so I'm going to go back to your question and, and try to answer the other part of it, which was, how long will they?
No, I, I can hear you, Bill.
We can't hear you, Lacy.
We break up too much.
Yeah, you're breaking up too much.
Lacy, can you just call back in on your phone?
You can call back in on a telephone?
Yeah.
Cause you're, you're, you're frozen in ice.
On this warm day, you're frozen in ice.
Do it. Let me try to dial back in. Give me just two minutes.
That's fine.
Yep.
We'll, we'll see you in a minute, Lacy. That's part of the program here with this type of meeting. Um, so Lacy should be able to, to help you, um, with a specific example, but the, but the other part of the answer to your question is that these bonds, when they're issued, normally they have a thirty-year term on them. Okay, so they're designed to pay off within thirty years. And that's consistent with what our financing plan shows here. Um, you do see occasionally, um, where you have a refinancing opportunity after the, the project has started to develop and it's got a little bit more presence in the marketplace. You're able oftentimes to refinance the bonds that you issued initially and refinance them at a lower interest rate. Which is an advantage to the property taxpayer. Uh, but usually in the context of issuing those refinancing bonds, there is a, an extension of the term. So if your original term was thirty years, um, and after five or six years, you've got enough development to refinance and achieve a lower interest rate, you'll often see those bonds also go out in thirty years. But the, the real limiter here is what do we have to spend our money on? We have a certain dollar amount of public improvements that we need to fund. And once we have issued enough bonds to fund those improvements, we, we don't, we don't need to issue any more bonds. And therefore the bonds that we have outstanding will, will pay off according to their term, whether it's thirty years or if it's thirty years plus an additional amount when you, when you end up with the refinancing. So it's not forever. Um, and, and there, there's a turn to each one of the bonds. I know we're only answering a part of your question. I'm happy to, you know, take it further there if, if there's anything I can do.
Well, I, um, sure. Uh, that, yeah, that still doesn't give the numbers as in just a general um, average square foot place, here's what the taxes will be at this rate this year. And then what's to come the following, or in five years, or ten years, or thirty years?
It'll be, it'll be an increase in property taxes. You can't pay for these bonds without having.
Well, of course it will be. That, that you're, you're avoiding what I'm asking you. I just, I want people to know exactly what the numbers are going to look like, not, not even exactly, just an average of, you know, is it going to go up twenty or fifty percent yearly for thirty years?
Um, I think we can model that for you. Um, unfortunately, we don't have our, um, our investment advisor with her program to be able to do that. The other thing to note, and Brian, maybe help me out a little bit. I mean, there's, the, part of the issue is there's nothing out there right now that we can compare. You know, I mean, we don't have, we don't have our retail that's been built yet. And, and so our re, there's no retail out there that's paying a certain tax burden right now. And therefore we don't have anything to compare that with in terms of what it might increase over the future.
No, that's true. I, I think, I just want to make sure, Jim, you understand that the, the tax, property tax levy we're talking about is um, only encapsulates the Argo site, right? The Argo property and the Argo owners. Doesn't affect anybody else in the city. You understand that, right?
Well, is it or is it not going to affect, um, other, like retail shops? Or at the upper level landing, any, any of that or no?
Um, it'll, it'll, it's a property tax, um, increase, as Bill said, and, and, and we'll get to Lacy will join us back here in a minute, I hope, and, and, um, certainly I don't think it's going to be a thirty to fifty percent tax increase. Um, but again, the, so the way this would work is we'll, you know, typically on a shopping center development, you'll have a structure called a triple net lease, um, where the, the tenant pays a base rent. Um, and then the, the property taxes are passed through, um, and other maintenance costs are passed through to that tenant. Um, and we do an estimate for them of that property tax ahead of time, and that's written into their lease. And the tenant also signs up for the program with eyes wide open, recognizing that there is a metro district in place. And their mill levies, um, that they're subject to those mill levies in the district. So it, it, Jim, this happens, um, in a majority of the ground up or redevelopment, uh, projects, mixed use centers across the state of Colorado. Um, so it's, it's fairly standard practice. And I just want to add one thing that the, the future hotel and the future village, um, if, if we can, you know, figure out all the mechanics required to park and the traffic issues associated with that next phase of development, which we'll be focusing on here as we move forward with Argo Cable Car, there's some significant extraordinary public improvement work that has to be done. Uh, for example, you know, to, to, to create that village, we'd have to move a, a good portion of that waste rock pile between the mill and the gondola terminal. And that could be as much as twenty thousand yards of material, you know, which is millions of dollars to move that, to, to create this plaza space, the, the, the village we, we envision right now. Similarly, with the hotel up on that upper bench, to build that hotel, we've got to create a new road, um, up there. Um, the existing access road will no longer be viable as a gondola is operating because we don't have the clearance for vehicular, uh, traffic beneath that. So there's going to be a new road that would have to be built just for that hotel. And that's going to be, you know, that's a two to two and a half million dollar project. So without this district funding, those things won't happen because the rents and the revenues that are generated by the tenant leases and the hotel revenues would never support a return on cost that would make any sense um, for anybody to do the deal. So it's important from that resp, in that res, perspective too. I just want to share that with you as well.
Did we ever get?
Okay, and I'm sorry.
I've just seen if Lacy was back on yet.
I don't see her.
Who am I done?
Hey, Bill?
Okay, son.
Bill, can you still hear me?
Yes, I can.
Bill, Bill, you mentioned the ownership taxes too on, on license plates and stuff nowadays that a forced tax on the citizens, oh, no matter what, like RTD in, in special districts in the Denver area? Or is that just vehicles registered in the special district area or share or stockholders of the Argo?
So it's a, it's a state imposed, uh, tax. So it's already on the books. Um, everybody who buys a vehicle within the county, you know, if you look at your statement, it's got a, it's got a line item on it for, um, the specific ownership tax that you pay as part of your registration. So there's nothing about this district that adds to, uh, any of that tax. It, so we're not adding more tax there.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, Lacy, I see you again.
I'm sorry about that. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. My apologies. I don't know what's going on in the internet tonight. So to answer your question, uh, you know, so, so this is sort of how the, the tax, uh, liability would break out. If you had a commercial property with a market valuation of about half a million dollars, that would result, result in an assessed value of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and a tax bill of about seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. For a residential property, I know we're, we're, we're focusing more on a, a commercial, uh, tax base here. But that fifty mills on the same market valuation for residential property would result in tax liability of about one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So hopefully that answers your question. I'm happy to, to get into any details.
Is that for year one, Lacy?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that would be the tax liability for these bonds that the district issues initially at that mill levy cap. And the way that it works is that, you know, the, the mills are capped at fifty mills. So that is, that is the maximum tax burden that any property owner in the district would be exposed to paying. And then as the district generates enough revenue such that certain reserve funds that secure these bonds are filled, then essentially those taxes could potentially lower over time just to pay debt service on the senior debt that's outstanding. Uh, and the idea in the long run is that as the district's credit quality improves over time, then we're able to refinance that debt at a lower interest rate than the initial non-rated bonds that are issued. And then we can have, uh, you, you know, a, a lower mill levy necessary to pay debt service on those bonds because you're not paying as much interest. So, so that is sort of the, kind of a classic life cycle of a debt district is, you, you know, it's that initially when the credit quality is, uh, you know, still has, there's still rooftops to be completed and there's still development coming, then you would borrow, just like you would as a mortgage holder, for example. You know, at, at higher interest rates and as, uh, you know, as assessed value is created and that revenue stream is proven over time. Just like if you were applying for a mortgage and you got a better job and you have like this longer history of, you know, making more and more money, you would be able to borrow at lower interest rates. Districts are no different. So we would be able to refinance that debt at a lower interest rate and potentially lower the levy from fifty mills to whatever it took to, to service that at that lower interest rate.
So Lacy, is this an additional fifty mills? On what's alr, what's already, uh, required of the city?
That's exactly right. And so this is the fifty mills in addition to what we would call the overlapping debt. Uh, or the overlapping mill levy that's imposed. So that would be the, you know, the, the municipality's mill levy, potentially the county's mill levy. Uh, the school district that might be imposing a mill levy not only for operations, but also for any bonded debt that the, the district passed a mill levy override to finance. So it is in addition. And I think if it were, if it were not, then you would maybe look at more of like a tax increment kind of situation, which isn't what, what, what's being, uh, which isn't what, what, what's being, uh, discussed here. So it is in excess of the existing mill levy already on the property.
Okay.
Can I ask more questions or did I ask too many already?
Oh, go right ahead, Art.
Okay, uh, sorry, Mayor, that is the way I'm learning. Um, the, the council can say no to this if we wish, correct?
Yes, it's before, it'll be up to the council to approve or.
Okay. Um, the next thing I'd like to know is these, um, finance, I mean, these, uh, investors, do they look at the current financial record of this business as well? Are they, are they privy to what they've been profitability or not over the last, how many years? Is that part of what they get to look at? Or they go simply on the model that you're, that you're predicting or suggesting or however you want to forecast it?
We typically don't. So I think what you're asking is, is it really gets into the offering document that is disseminated into the market, um, to, you know, that markets are the bonds that we construct and sell. Um, typically, we don't have financial statements of businesses attached to those. That's highly proprietary information. Um, instead, you know, the, the investors that we sell our bonds to, which as Bill pointed out earlier, are institutional investors. And so, so one thing to know about institutional investors for anyone, you know, that, that may have questions about those is that these bonds are sold in, in five hundred thousand dollar denominations. That means that you have to have five hundred thousand dollars to buy any chunk of bonds. And that is one of many requirements for the purchasers of the initial non-rated bonds that are issued. It's a protection that is built into the bond that, uh, you know, we, it's sort of, it indicates that we're selling them to sophisticated investors. Uh, typical purchasers are high yields municipal bond funds. And so we're talking like the high yield municipal bond funds of like Goldman Sachs or Nuveen or Invesco. So these, these individuals have and teams of analysts whose whole job is to read our offering documents, evaluate the risk of any given transaction. And then if the, the credit profile is kind of on the, you know, the, the early development stage, then that would, you know, that would suggest a higher cost of borrowing at that point. And again, you know, once that assessed value is created and built out, we're able to refinance at lower interest rates. And so there's a number of kind of structural elements that are built into a bond financing to make sure that these bonds fall into the hands of individuals that are, that are able to analyze this risk and that frankly do this all day, every day for a living. Um, and so, so hopefully that's responsive to your question. Occasionally, we'll have, you know, individuals ask for information relative to the development team. A lot of times they, they review that on their own, you know, but just by doing internet searches. And, you know, oftentimes too, we're, we're offering bonds that are, uh, for districts in which, um, you know, publicly traded home builders are building. And so all that information is readily available, uh, in the public domain. Hopefully that, that answers your question.
Well, it does. It's, uh, it concerns me that, I mean, so they have no idea how good or bad the management team is that they're putting their money into. And you say Invesco, I own Invesco, uh, so I'm, I think I better write them a letter about this one. But anyway, um, I'm just teasing. What is it? Well, I'm just teasing, Lacy.
So I would also say, I would say that they, they do have, I mean, there's, they do evaluate the, the viability of the development entity that's backing the project. And one way that they do that is, you know, if, if the entity is under contract with builders or has sold ground to folks that are coming in to develop, those are all metrics by which they evaluate the, the reputation of the folks that are, that are developing property within any given district. So.
As, as of today, if they were to be issuing the bonds, do you, uh, what interest rate would that be at?
That's a great question. So if we were doing it today, I mean, the district's at a very early stage. I would say the senior debt. And don't quote me on this, you know, we were in a post-COVID environment and there was a lot of volatility through April and, and March, as I'm sure many of you are aware. So we are in overall a bit of a higher interest rate environment, although a lot of ground has been gained uh, in, in the district space and the non-rated bond space since then. And we, we've got a, a, a greatly recovering market on our hands now, which is fantastic news for everyone trying to raise capital for, for development projects and certainly for me too. Uh, you know, but I would say that we would probably be issuing a, a senior tranche of, of debt anywhere between, you know, five and a half, five seventy-five to six and a quarter. I frankly, I haven't had a robust conversation with Brian in some time about where he is in terms of his contracts, but somewhere in that range is where you're, where we're looking.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your answers. They're very good.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we're kind of running out of time. We'll keep going. Any other question?
Sorry, Mayor.
No, you're fine, Art. That's what we're here for. Uh, any other council members want to, uh, ask any questions or have any concerns?
Yes, uh, my Argo Aqua Works, June twenty twenty, put in all the site application for their wastewater reclaim. Uh, there's two responses.
Two responses?
I'm getting a echo.
I'm getting a echo.
Don't know why.
Don't know why.
Uh, one by JBA.
I think that's from the Galaxy S twenty.
Pardon?
I think the echo is coming from the Galaxy S twenty. I think, uh, we need to mute that one.
Okay. The other one was from Upper Kirk Creek Watershed, uh, asking about, what a few questions and, uh, before we go too far, I'd like to get a response from Argo on those two reports. Not today, obviously. I mean, it's gonna take some time, but before we vote or anything, I think it's prudent that we do get a response. On them, uh, I don't know how, we don't have a lot of time. And if, if I go into any depth, it's gonna take some time to answer these questions.
John, we're in receipt of both letters and, you know, we've, of course, fully intend on meeting with you and whomever at the city wants to have, be in that meeting to discuss our responses.
Right.
Um, I don't know how that's connected to the metro district though.
Yeah, well, and that's.
That's your service area, right?
Well, the, the wastewater treatment plant is within the district for sure, but, but the approvals of the wastewater treatment plant, I think, are not connected to the service plan itself.
We're about rezoning questions such as, you know, you, you mentioned a hundred, uh, residents. Is that in the upper landing or?
No, the, the rezoning is also separate from the metro district, John, and that's.
Yeah, John, the, the rezoning and the annexation is part of our public hearing tonight. So we should save those concerns and those questions for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I run through the rest of the PowerPoint just to give everybody a high level view?
Sure. We'll give you, we'll give you a little more time, Bill.
All righty. So the image on your screen is an overall view of the areas that would be included within the metro district. We have the upper landing and then we have the lower area where the mine is and, and additional development will occur in both areas. So that's just to show you um, where our district will be. Here's some detail on the lower uh, area that probably looks familiar to, to you. Nothing particular to point out here, and this is just a drawing of what the upper landing area looks like. So those would be our, our, uh, boundaries for the metro district. So here we get to some of the key business points in the service plan. Our estimated public improvements, um, are at eighteen million five oh eight and some change based on current costs. We have a total debt cap built into the service plan of thirty-five million. This was based on a delta that existed between what the estimated costs were in the Soda Creek service plan versus what you actually approved. This number is not as important as this number, this fifty mils, the maximum debt mill levy, as I've mentioned on several occasions. This is the number that really limits the amount of debt that you can issue because the market is only going to loan against valuation that exists out in the project. And so they, they will only buy bonds that are properly secured. And, and so that number will produce for the bondholders a certain dollar amount they're willing to invest. So what we're really trying to do here is identify what we think are the total estimated project costs, what we, what would the, the providing some cushion would be to allow us some room to move as time goes on. But also, most importantly, that we have this fifty mil debt cap that limits what we can actually issue to the marketplace. Then we have an operations and maintenance mill levy. If we have any facilities that we continue to operate, those that the city doesn't want for some reason. If there's some open space improvements, some, I don't know, sidewalks, I don't know what it could be. If there's something that the city doesn't want to take, we need to have a mill levy available to the metro district to fund the maintenance of those, in those facilities. At the end of the day, the development approvals will determine what the city takes versus what the metro district has. And those are, those are yet to occur. But we built in the opportunity to operate facilities that the city doesn't take. Um, we are allowed to impose fees, as I mentioned earlier. The financing plan, whoops, the financing plan does not, um, presently anticipate we're imposing fees. The maximum term of bonds that would apply to anything that was in a residential area would be forty years. So that's, that's a, a further detail on, on my discussion earlier about the fact that most bonds are issued with a thirty-year term. And then there could be a extension of that term for refinancing. But your, the service plan approved for Soda Creek had a special limitation with respect to residential areas. It said, hey, it's gotta be forty years and, and it can't go any longer than forty years unless you have a resident controlled board that votes in favor of that. So that was intended to be a, a further benefit to the property owners. There are some limitations on certain powers. We, we don't have a fire protection power because that's already being provided. We're not gonna compete for TV or telecommunications. So there's some limits on, on the powers that we have. This is, uh, uh, an exhibit in the service plan that breaks down phase one and phase two estimated costs for the project equalling the total of eighteen million five oh eight that I mentioned a, a bit ago. And, uh, Brian has helped us with, uh, with these cost estimates. As far as the revenue strains available for metro district activities, we have our property taxes at fifty mils for debt service. We have our specific ownership taxes that I talked about previously, the share of, of registration fees. And we modeled a six percent, uh, revenue stream available from, from this source. Then we have something called PIF revenues. These are public improvement fees. What these are, uh, is a, is a privately imposed fee by the developer, by the owner of the, of the property, um, that would impose a one percent fee on sales transactions and lodging transactions that occur within the boundaries of this district. So if we have restaurant space, if we have, um, shops that sell clothing, if we have a hotel, then there will be transactions where people that come to visit will buy, uh, food, they'll buy clothing, they'll buy hotel rooms, and they will pay the city's, uh, sales tax. They'll pay any city taxes that apply in those transactions. But they will also pay a one percent add-on fee that will be used to help fund district activities and in particular district bonds. Um, this is common in, um, projects in the state that have retail sales. It's a way to add to the revenue stream to help make the bonds, um, more marketable. Then finally, revenues for operations and administrations. Uh, this is modeled at ten, ten, uh, mils, uh, in addition to the fifty mils up above. And this is intended to help us pay for how to stay alive and, and stay in good, um, uh, graces with the state because we have a bunch of filings to make. And then to the extent that we're operating any facilities that the city doesn't take, we need a revenue stream to be able to do that. So we have two bond issues that are, uh, part of the financing plan, which is an exhibit to the service plan. First one is modeled to occur in twenty twenty-one. And the amount of the, uh, proceeds from that bond issue are projected to be just under eighteen million. We have a second bond issuance that is modeled to occur in twenty thirty-one. We mentioned that as a, as a project matures, it has the ability to refinance bonds that it may have issued early on at a higher interest rate to refinance those bonds at a lower interest rate. That's what's being projected for twenty thirty-one, that we, we would refund this initial bond issue at a lower interest rate because we're, we're farther along in our development. And we would be able, at that time, if we needed it, we would be able to generate an additional eight million dollars in bond proceeds, um, beyond, uh, the, the amount that we have previously generated. We may never need to, uh, issue those bonds. It'll depend on how the project goes, how costs have gone. And, um, but it shows, it shows that with the fifty mil debt service cap, we have enough, uh, bonding authority comfortably within the projections that we're making in this financing plan to enable the district to issue bonds in an amount sufficient to pay the estimated cost of public infrastructure and to do so and pay them off, uh, at a mill levy not to exceed the fifty mils. So it's intended to show you that we have the financial strength, um, um, to execute the infrastructure, um, financing plan. And then we're at questions and answers, and I know that last part was, was coming a little fast, but, that's the overview of the details of the financing plan and the, and the project and the, and the service plan. Um, it, the service plan, you were, you were fortunate to have, uh, somebody come in last year who, um, was familiar with, uh, service plans around the state and, and the model that they used for the one that you approved back then, um, has all the, the bells and whistles. It has all the limitations. It had, it's a state-of-the-art service plan in terms of other jurisdictions. And although you don't have very many service plans in your boundaries, we modeled hours after that one. And I think you can look at any other jurisdiction, take a sample of any other jurisdiction, and you'll see very similar limitations um, on the, particularly the financing components.
Hey, hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Is the seventeen point nine million and the seven point eight million dollars that's profits through twenty thirty-one?
Those are, uh, spendable proceeds for public infrastructure costs, not profits.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And what, I'm sure in your experience, what happens if we, you put those bonds out there and they don't raise? These, uh, uh, intelligent investors decide not to buy all these bonds and you only come up with eleven million dollars. And that's happened before. I'm, I'm positive. I've read that where bonds are put out there and, and, and the interest, uh, for one reason or another is not there and not all the bonds are sold to raise the money that you're looking for. What occurs then?
Then, uh, that's up to the developer to, uh, make up the difference, is the short story there.
Okay.
Yeah, not the city.
And, and your experience, has that happened, um? Or is that a myth that I'm?
You know, we have, with Lacy and her firm involved, they, they do ninety percent probably of all the metro district bond issues in the state. And they know how to model, uh, and they know what the market is. And so what you're seeing here is their experience in terms of what is marketable with the assumptions that we have, right? You still have to have an offering document that explains the project and the investors still have to buy it. They have to buy that, that explanation. So.
Right. Okay.
But, but these are based on their experience and what other deals, you know, could produce. So it's not just picking it out of thin air.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that occurs with IPOs as well. So I, you know, they always aren't successful. So just a question I had. Thank you so much. I'll be quiet, Mayor, for now.
I know you're fine, Art. All right, with that, we, uh, are past our seven o'clock hour. Um, this will be coming back to council for, um, will be coming back to council for consideration on, Andy, you have that date?
Twenty fourth.
The, on the twenty-fourth, next Monday night? Um, has everybody felt that they have gotten enough information and asked enough questions, uh, for us to hear this next Monday night?
No.
John, you still don't think you've got enough information?
Well, yeah, there's some stuff I'd like to, yeah, get more information. Like the response back on these.
I'm sorry.
Reports, yeah.
I'm sorry, say it again, John?
Uh, the sport, response bar from the two reports for JBA and Kirk Creek Watershed.
Well, that has nothing to do with the service agreement. So.
Oh, okay. This is just a service agreement. Okay. Now I understand. Okay.
Okay, okay. All right.
Not the service plan. Does this have involved, that, that'll be the service plan, right?
Service, the service agreement, kind of like what we did with the, yeah, no, no, no. Are you talking about the questions that you're having? Now say, who is that? Who was just talking?
Mr. Davenport wasn't muted, so I just, I just helped him out a little bit.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, Mayor, but this is Carmen here. It seems to me, uh, council.
I don't know, Mayor, but this is Carmen here. It seems to me, uh, Councilor Curtis, you have some follow-up questions maybe on um some feedback that was gotten from a prior FDP approval. Um, and those are questions that we, uh, as staff can work with Argo to um get to you and and the rest of council, uh, Councilor Curtis. And to the extent that you have questions forthcoming on the sort of small-ish annexation that we are scheduled to consider right now. Um, we can answer those questions in the context of that particular hearing, but you are bringing up, I believe, um, John, some questions about a a previous application that you saw, which was the the FDP approval, so um, we can absolutely still follow up and and get you the the follow-up feedback you are wanting on that.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, let's uh, let's adjourn this meeting.
I have one question, Mayor, uh, just one comment. Um, I think, uh, John Curtis's um comments also apply to the PIA. So it's both the FDP and the PIA.
But of PIA, it's already part of the PIA.
Yep.
Okay. We will work very closely with JBA and others on your concerns and uh, we're gonna, we're gonna keep an eye on that, John. I appreciate you taking your knowledge in that industry and and making sure that uh everything's um being followed and if if everybody doesn't know, John is our representative for Aqua, the Upper uh Clear Creek Watershed. And um so so he's hearing all this information through them, um, some some discussion going on amongst that group, so. Okay, uh, let's adjourn out of this meeting, give you three minutes to go to the restroom, and then we'll be back for our public hearing.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mayor, can you hear me?
Sound good, Art.
Uh, Mike, um, in this, in reference to this meeting on um Wednesday, um, I know it's gonna be like a one-on-one on on the housing and what have you and all the rules and regulations, things like that. I'm I'm assuming we're gonna have an opportunity to discuss things, are we not? As, I mean, the reason I'm asking is there was a point that came up in the meeting last Monday under public comments. And um, I would like to address it when we had that meeting on Wednesday with the planning commission as well as ourselves.
Sure.
Will that be, will that be file-able?
Uh, what questions are you gonna ask, Art?
Uh, I just wanna know that I can. I don't wanna discuss it now, but I wanna discuss it with the, okay. It it it'll be short, but there was a couple of comments made on the public comments that I think need to be addressed.
And the. Well, the the work session's gonna be uh basically uh uh, what housing are we looking for? What would we want if somebody brings housing in? What what kind of housing are we looking for? Are we looking for all attainable housing? Are we looking for a mix with market rate and some attainable in it and things like that?
Okay, I just don't wanna send a mis- mixed message to um to someone who may have already put in a plan and um um, doesn't know which direction to go in, which I think has been clearly demonstrated, and I wanna verbalize that at that meeting.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, let's see, who are we missing? We're missing, uh, Bob's not gonna be on tonight. Uh, I think we have everybody. Hi, Jan. All right, it is uh seven fourteen, Monday, August seventeenth. This is a special meeting for the uh Idaho Springs City Council. Can I have roll call, please? Oh, Diane's not back.
Oh.
Diane?
You could do, Mayor, uh, you could do roll call, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Chuck Harmon.
Here.
John Curtis.
Here.
Art Kekke Bailey.
Here.
Uh, Jim Clark.
Here.
Mike Hillman.
Here.
Think I got everybody. All right, with that, uh, Bob Bowen will have a conflict of interest with our agenda tonight, so he will not be with us. John, do you have a flag for us? Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance. All right, please be seated, thank you. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us tonight. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move we approve the agenda for the August seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion to second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move on. So we are gonna have a um do we need to approve the order? No, uh, we need to do the public hearing first, right, Carmen? Yeah, okay, uh. We're gonna have a public hearing tonight. This hearing will come to order. There are two public hearings before the city council of the city of Idaho Springs. The first is ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty. An ordinance annexing to the city of Idaho Springs approximately eleven point one-five acres of property within section twenty-five township three south range seventy west of the sixth principal meridian in Clear Creek County, Colorado, including the ABE motor and queen loads and a portion of the alpha load to be known as the Mary Jane Annexation, numbers three, four, and five to the city of Idaho Springs. The second is ordinance number ten in series twenty twenty. An ordinance rezoning approximately eleven point one-five acres known as the Mary Jane Annexation, numbers three, four, and five to the city of Idaho Springs to plan development. The order of these hearings, this hearing will be followed as follows. Staff introduction and testimony, and the applicant will be sworn in by the city clerk, and then we will have public testimony. First hearing is now declared open, open. It is seven seventeen. First, I need to hear staff testimony, please.
Uh, Mayor Hillman, uh, community development planner for Cole. So this is an annexation of approximate, a little bit over eleven acres of land. And the way to think about this is it's the missing, uh, it's like a a couple of missing jigsaw pieces. So the reason that Mary Jane decided to annex this is that this improves access to the top, but more importantly, it allows the construction of the gondola. Um, i- i- and if we hadn't gone this way, then they would have had to spend a lot of money realigning the gondola. But but by adding this piece, the gondola stays within that thirty-foot easement that you guys have already approved. Um, and it really allows, um again, that access, and it also allows um the gondola tower construction. But um, I think my staff report is pretty straightforward. It meets all the conditions of an annexation. Two of the parcels are enclaves. The other two are sort of surrounded, but I do want to add one piece of information. Um, John Bordoni and I had a discussion with um Fred and Carl at the county with respect to the roads. So you will note that, let me see if I can share this screen. Um, John, can you, uh, Jonathan? Kane, can you share that screen? So, if you look at at this um diagram, even though it says planned development, you'll see that the very top parcel is part of what's going to be annexed. And 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 that annexation basically takes two pieces of county road out of what they thought was the county road system. But John Bordoni and I had a very productive discussion with Fred and Carl. And what we realized is this same condition exists for Virginia Canyon Mountain Park. So, the discussion John and I had with the county is that these roads going up to this private property, they they are not platted right of way. The county is gaining access by way of a prescriptive easement. So the one question that the county was gonna get back to the state on is do we need to do anything? In other words, the county agreed it makes the most sense for them to maintain those roads. John Bordoni was very happy, right, John? And um, so, so i- if the prescriptive easement does not cover i- i- because those roads are gonna be coming into the city. If the prescriptive easement has some issues in terms of county maintenance, then what will happen is there will be a simple access easement. And I've asked both the applicant and the county, do we wanna make that an access and utility easement or just an access easement? But for the time being, we're fine moving forward with this annexation. I just wanted the council people to understand that we're looking into that issue.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Um, next, we'll hear from the applicant that will be sworn in by uh Diane. Diane, are you back with us?
I am.
All right, who who's gonna be the one that's gonna do the? Mary Jane, raise your right hand. Repeat after Diane.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Oh, I said repeat after, but I guess that's okay. All right, Mary Jane.
All right, I'm I'm just gonna basically repeat what we um did throughout the PD and the last, the first reading on the ordinance of the annexation. These properties were all intended to be part of the original development. I had just not acquired them prior to the approval of the planned development. They were, we just didn't make all the deadlines to annex them at the same time as we annexed everything else. So this is nothing new to the project. This is always what we intended. And uh, now we we have acquired everything that will allow the city to have um dedicated access and the Argo to have dedicated access to the top of the cable car. And as you know, the intent was never to have public access from the top of the cable car. That will mostly be maintenance and service vehicles to serve the gondola as well as emergency services vehicles. So this was always part of the plan, just didn't make it in time to annex it before, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, you're on mute. I hate that little button. Um, do we have Jonathan, do we, Diane, did we have any um public testimony tonight?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, so for this uh first hearing, we are going to declare it now closed.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Before you close it, may I add one piece of uh information from staff?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, you will note uh in your packets in the annexation ordinance that section four of that ordinance refers to and expressly makes the annexation approved should you vote to approve it. Uh, the ordinance expressly makes that contingent upon or subject to the terms and conditions of the annexation agreement between the city uh and the Argo folks and um FYI, we had certainly hoped to have that in final form for you here this evening. Uh, it is almost there, as I understand it, with um Argo's council, there is but one um lingering issue concerning water, as I understand it, with uh Argo's attorney, Mr. Federgal. Um, but that's it, otherwise that is a completed agreement, but that doesn't help you this evening. So, Mayor and Council, you could, uh, should you be inclined to approve the annexation. Um, again, section four of the ordinance expressly makes the annexation subject to the terms and conditions of the annexation agreement. I'm sure you want to see and put eyeballs yourself on that agreement. Um, however, so uh, I would suggest, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanna make a comment, Carmen. Thank you. Both your legal eagle and our legal eagle have been working diligently on this. Hopefully, almost final agreement between the city and the Argo. Um, just wanted to mention that every, every, uh, every approval that we've had has had a contingent agreement with it. And Team Argo fully understands that uh the terms of this agreement are are, you know, contingent on, the annexation is contingent on the approval of the agreement, so. Where, it's it's a matter of form, and we've been going through, I don't know, we must have eight agreements or so, Carmen, now, huh?
Right, right. So a- again, then thanks, Mary Jane, um, fully agreed. Um, and I appreciate the applicant's um acknowledgement of that, counsel, just so you're aware and we're fully transparent. Uh, I will bring that annexation agreement once it is fully ironed out back to you uh for your review and approval as well. So I appreciate the applicant acknowledging that, too. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you, Carmen, for that. Okay, with that, we're gonna close this first hearing, and we are gonna open it up for uh council discussion. Is there any uh thing that we need to discuss about this annexation? I believe that Carmen uh told us about the other document that's still in the process of being prepared. Uh, do we need, and then I guess what I'd ask, do we need to make this contingent upon that document uh with the motion or? No? No, no.
It's already expressed.
I don't think so, Mayor, because we stitched that into the ordinance expressly.
Okay, okay. All right, council, um, last chance for discussion and questions. Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve ordinance number nine, series twenty two, an ordinance annexing to the city of Idaho Springs approximately eleven point one five acres. Of property within section twenty five township three south. Range seventy three west, the sixth principal meridian in Clear Creek County, Colorado, including the ABE motor. And queen loads and a portion of the alpha load. Known as the Mary Jane annexation numbers. Three, four and five in the city of Idaho Springs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, I think I heard Jim on the second, all right, discussion. Can I have roll call, Diane, please?
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Art Kekavale.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you all.
Now we will move into our second hearing tonight. The the second hearing is now declared open, it is seven twenty eight. Same as the we did before, we'll have staff introduction and testimony, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll have public testimony. Staff?
So again, all we're doing here, just think of a jigsaw puzzle, that these pieces are coming into the existing planned development that you have already approved. So there is no change in the uses allowed within. The planned development again as approved, so really, we're just adding these pieces, the one thing. That I will discuss with the applicant, if so approved, is is how do we want to record any possible amendment? To the planned development, they can either provide a new. Sort of overall exhibit, or we can do it as an amendment, but I can talk to Carmen about that and we can decide the best way to proceed. But again, this is pretty perfunctory, there's no change in the existing planned development that you approved. In twenty nineteen, so it's it's sort of smooth sailing.
Okay, thank you, Barb, now we'll hear from the applicant that's already been sworn in, so remember you're under oath, Mary Jane? You're on mute.
I have to say one funny thing about the whole annexation, I never meant for it to be called Mary Jane Annexation. But Greg Markle surveyed it and said, what do you want to call this, I said, I don't know. And then he called it the Mary Jane Annexation, so it's kind of a funny story, but. I I just want to say again that this rounds out the planned development that we always intended to do. And we had those borders in our mind back in June of twenty nineteen when we got approved and. We sealed, we sealed the deal with the purchase of the property, so. That's bottom line.
All right, thank you, Mary Jane, Diane, John, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, um, so it is now seven thirty. Our second public hearing is now closed and now we'll open this up for council discussion. Any questions or discussion or clarification that we need to get? Before we take a, take a position on this. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve what's number ten, series twenty twenty, an ordinance zoning approximately eleven point one five acres. Known as the Mary Jane Annexation numbers three, four and five to the city of Idaho Springs. To plan development, PD.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Art is second, okay, last chance for discussion or questions, council. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Art Kekavale.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Right, motion passes, all right, thank you, council and staff and everybody that was on tonight. It is now seven thirty two and we will adjourn our meeting.
Bye, everybody.